Good afternoon. Let's call today's Board of Trustees meeting to order at four P M. Trudy, could you please call the roll?
Philkowski.
Present.
Epic.
Here.
McTomey.
Here.
Nunley.
Here.
Pismo.
Here.
Sheets.
Stanger.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
Zibble.
Here.
Thank you. If we could please stand for the pledge.
I do leave it unified by the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Zibble, would you please read the mission statement?
Certainly, Mr. President. Lake Tran is committed to providing quality public transportation services to all Lake County residents with special emphasis on meeting the needs, meeting the transportation needs of seniors and people with disabilities.
Thank you very much. And do we have any public comments in the room today? Absolutely. If you could please, if you could please go to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
There we go. My name is Lewis Berlin Game. I live at forty eight eighty Brooksdale Road, Menor Headlands. And I've been riding Lake Tran for well since two thousand fourteen. And first off, I want to thank everybody here for providing us the service that you do. There's just a couple of issues that I've talked to some of the drivers about and a couple of the residents in the Headlands that we'd like to bring voice our opinion on and see how it would go. The first one, the main one is the return trip going back into the Headlands. We have to come here to the base every night before we go back in. We sit out here for ten fifteen minutes before we go back into Headlands. Talking to the drivers, a few of the drivers, they kind of agree with me and some of the other residents that there shouldn't be a reason why the bus can't go back into Headlands when it makes its return trip on the northbound route. Go back in the Headlands, drop us off, because there's only two or three of us that ride the number eight. There's very few people that take the eight. So I don't really see that being an issue going on. It doesn't take that long to go down Corridor Row, turn down Brooksdale, and then they can right turn right down Brooksdale toward the south and come back base and drop us off and do it as I need bases. I don't know if that would be an issue, but that's one of the main things that we talked about, the customer's side. The other one is the shelter outside. Now, I haven't had to use the shelter, but one of the riders that rides the bus every day, she has to wait out there for the number eight before she can go home. The other thing, the poor girl was soaking wet from sitting in there because you've got that much of a gap in the top of the roof to the walls, and the rain was just pouring right in her and just completely soaked her. There should be no reason why we can't get a barrier around there to stop the rain from going in. I don't think it would take that much. And then the other thing is the new, I haven't been out there yet lately, but there was no heat in there also. And I thought the shelters were all supposed to have heat for the customers. And it wasn't heated. And the poor girl was, I mean, she was drenched. And so I told her that I would, I was coming to the meeting and I would say something on that aspect of it. That's really about all there is. I think Lake Tran has done a great job. They've been very supportive. They've worked with us. They've been, I have no complaints. I use the dial ride to go to work. I work at the Home Depot Diamond Center Drive. I take the dial rides there because I can't get a road bus there. The number nine doesn't work out for me to go there because I have to sit and wait like an hour, hour and a half to catch the bus. So that's why I do the dial ride. I take the number eight two to three times a week to go do my grocery shopping, go to my doctors, and just different uses for that. So it has worked out perfect. I have no complaints about that. The main thing is just the trip back in. It's very inconvenient to have to sit out here for fifteen minutes when they could just pull in and drop us off and take us back into the Headlands. So that's really all I've got to say. I don't know. You know, I just wanted to come in, voice my opinion, see what you folks all had to say about it. And we can go from there and maybe work something out to make everybody happy.
Well, first off, thank you for being a user. We appreciate you taking Lake Tran. Secondly, with this being the first time we've heard of it, you know, I would ask our CEO to either respond if he had any comments, but to to later follow up and I believe he has your contact information.
That's all, that's all, that's all, that's all we're asking. Yeah, that's all we're asking. It's just, you know, it was my understanding that the layovers out here by us coming back to the base was for the electric bus. So they could bring the electric bus in and charge the electric bus. We haven't had an electric bus maybe for a whole week. It's always a dial ride bus, which is fine with me because we don't have that many customers riding the number eight. You know, they don't need that big bus. It's just a waste of gas, waste of machine, the whole nine yards. The dial ride bus is perfect for that.
Sure.
But it's just the inconvenience to have to come back here and sit the fifteen twenty minutes when, you know, you work a whole day at work, eight hours of work, you want to get home. You know, you don't want to be sitting out there in a bus for, you know, the fifteen minutes. And that's just.
Absolutely. Ben, do you have any comments now, or do you need to do some more research?
Yeah, well, so Route Eight is relatively new. We'll do a time analysis and see how, if we can include that in.
That would be great. Appreciate it. I mean, you know, like I said, it's, we'll listen to anything you guys have to say because, you know, we'll work with you. You know, we're not trying to be pains, you know.
Sure.
It just would be, it'd be a better convenience for us to get back, you know, to get home.
Well, absolutely. Well, thank you so much for coming to the meeting.
Thank you for listening to me. Thanks for all your help. You guys have been great. You know, it's just these little issues that have come up.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Have a nice rest of your day.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, is there a motion to approve the Lake Tran Board of Trustees Board Meeting Minutes of January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pismo. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. McNamee. Trudy, if you can please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
McTomey.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Epstein.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you. Is at this time, is there a motion to enter into executive session to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment pursuant to section one twenty-one point twenty-two G four of the Ohio Revised Code?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Nunley.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stanger. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
McTomey.
Yeah.
Nunley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect. The board is going into executive session at four oh seven P M. And we will invite Mr. Dines and Mr. Capel to have a return from executive session at five twenty-three. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Lisa for the financials.
Okay, so this will be the December two thousand twenty-two financial report. We ended this year, you know, all this is subject to audit, total operating revenue of about thirty-five point three million dollars. Our total operating expense for two thousand twenty-two is about nineteen point five. And our estimated local capital expense is about one point seven, leaving us a income of about fourteen point, almost fourteen point two. And of course, the depreciation is estimated also because I'm still working on that. It's about five point four million with a net income after depreciation of almost eight point eight million. If we turn to the second page, and I put the percentages on here just to kind of give an idea when you're comparing one year to the next. And I would say we're all within the range. So if you compare it, whether it's budget versus actual for two thousand twenty-two or two thousand twenty-one, fares and miscellaneous were right around seven percent, a little bit higher this year, which is really a good sign. It just means we're kind of coming out of that pandemic because twenty-one, we were still seeing a significant amount of the pandemic. So fares and miscellaneous, more people riding. Sales tax is right in that same particular range, right around sixty-six percent. Federal and state, we're about twenty, it's about twenty-six point, twenty-six point two percent for this year of our total revenue. And that is down from twenty-one. Again, we were getting grants in twenty-one. We were still getting them in twenty-two. And then in twenty-three, when we start the new year, you'll see that that will be significantly less. Overall, we were about nine hundred and twenty-six thousand better than what we had budgeted for revenue. On the expense side, wages and benefits, again, we're a service industry, so that's going to be one of our biggest expenses. We're right around that seventy-five percent mark. Services and software, right around eight percent of our budget. And supplies, which is fuel, is included in there, you know, just like office supplies and that. We're right around the ten percent mark, a little bit less than what we had budgeted. Pretty close to, similar to two thousand twenty-one percentage wise, we're a little bit more though. Utilities and insurance up a little bit from twenty-one, a little bit less than what we budgeted. Again, we had a change in there with the buses. We have electric buses now, so that's probably the addition there when you're comparing it from twenty-one to twenty-two. And then purchased transportation and miscellaneous, we're right around that two point four, two point five percent mark. For our total expenses for the year at about nineteen point five million, were less than what we had budgeted at about almost two point nine million. And again, we were, we were still feeling the effects of that pandemic. So all in all, there's nothing other than that that really stands out. If we go on to the next page, so this will show you what our cash balance is as of December. Operating is what the board passed is what we would agree on a percentage. It's about five months. That probably will be going up after we do the CAFR this year a little bit. Capital, this is just the two thousand twenty-two and prior. These are things that we've already made an obligation to. It just sometimes it takes, you know, a year or two before those all get spent. Other is the balance of what you want to do with your cash and S T S would be your special transportation service balance, bringing a total cash balance of fifty-three point three million dollars. We go on to the next page. Again, this is, this obviously, we all know this has changed with the passing of the headquarters and that. So but as of December, this is what it was at that time. Our grand total for our capital from two thousand twenty-two to twenty-six estimated, and again, it's going to change. It changes monthly, sometimes every other month. We're at forty-eight point seven million, just kind of gives you a breakout of how much is federal, state versus local. And if we could go on to the next one, and then this is our special transportation budget. Total revenue for the year is about ninety-three thousand, operating expenses one hundred and sixty-five with a subsidy of about seventy-one thousand. And if you go to the next page, and that just kind of breaks out, all this revenue is basically from our fares or miscellaneous is a little bit of interest that we earn on the income that we have in there. So we had about ninety-three thousand in revenue and one hundred and sixty-five, and we bake it, break it out by the same as we do with the operating with wages and benefits. Again, it's a service industry. So that's going to be the larger part of our expenses. Services being at sixteen point four percent, supplies at about eighteen to nineteen percent for this year, and then five percent in insurance, which we're pretty close to being on budget for that. So we budgeted two hundred, about one hundred and sixty-five. Again, we were still seeing some of the effects of that pandemic, two thousand twenty-three. It'll, I feel that it'll be even a little bit better. So. And other than that, I can answer any questions if you have any.
Yes, Lisa. One of my colleagues reached out to me on the board today, and can you please let me know where we are at with the Ohio Open Checkbook?
Ohio Open Checkbook.
I haven't actually had a chance to talk to Lisa. Lisa was out with her husband's surgery for a while, so we haven't had a discussion about that yet, but we'll be starting it soon.
Okay. And is that something that's going to be like just, is that something we're moving forward with, or is that something that's just going to be discussed?
My intention is to talk to her about how easily it is for our current accounting software to export the information to it. And and we would come back to the board and kind of say, hey, this is a relatively easy process, or we may have to, you know, pay for a connection or something. So we need to, we still haven't done the investigation yet.
Sure, no problem. And for those of you who don't know, the Ohio Open Checkbook is, you can go to the Ohio Treasurers website, and you can look up many municipalities, government agencies, and you're able to review their expenditures. It's basically an open checkbook.
Yeah, the only other transit system on it right now is the Southwest Ohio Regional Transit Authority, which is Cincinnati. And the, I, I looked at their data, and it's really very unusable from a average citizen's perspective. So I want to make sure if we do it, that it also is not just kind of information that doesn't serve a purpose. So we need to spend some time, make sure the accounting software can export the right data.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Lisa?
Yeah, I got one. Could you go back a couple of slides? You had, you had shown that the cash balance was fifty-three million dollars on this one here. And you had provided a revised sheet in the packet that showed that at the end of twenty-two, it was forty-one million. Why is, what's the difference?
The, the big one you have has the, has updated capital projections because this is from December. Those projections weren't included because they, it's a timing issue.
Okay, so that's not the end of the year balance, is what you're saying?
Well, cash balance is, that's a projection. This is an actual cash in the bank. So.
You're looking at the, you're looking at the five-year forecast?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure on that one. I have, I have a detail of the investments for the fifty-three. That's based on a cash, this is based on a cash basis for that actual cash balance. It doesn't include any accruals or anything like that.
I mean, you're going to, you're going to talk about this more later?
Yeah.
Okay. Get into it then. Lisa, is the S T S money there? Is that the money from Atkins in there?
That is correct.
Okay, how much was that?
Oh, I don't remember the exact amount. I want to say it was like six or seven hundred thousand dollars.
I was going to say seven fifty or seven eighty off the top of my head.
Yeah, that was, that was the total sale price. We had to subtract the county's piece of property out of there. Our total income was like around six eighty, I think.
Yeah, I was about to say, I mean, I can certainly find that. I don't remember the exact amount, but it was around the six hundred thousand dollar mark.
Well, that money shouldn't be in S T S. That's Lake Tran's money.
It, in essence, Mr. She, it's all Lake Tran's money, but it was, it was asked to be put just for designation to be used to support that particular transportation. But it is, this is all Lake Tran's money. It's not, it's not something that you couldn't say today you wanted to take out of there and put into your regular operating account. You could do that.
Well, my point is it shouldn't be in S T S. It should be somewhere in what's part of Lake Tran's accounting. S T S, I understand, is separate accounting. And why is it in the S T S? It's supposed to be separate.
Yes, but to, so what we do when we do the S T S, we, we put the cash in there. So like all the expenses technically get paid from the operating, and then we charge them back. And we have to be very cautious that we're doing that correctly because the S T S portion cannot have any grant funding because we're not operating according to, you know, this piece doesn't operate the same as our operating with our normal operating expenses. There are allowed to have the F T A funding. So it was just designated to put that, to set it there. But like I said, it could all, it can all be moved. It's still part of operating.
Well, at one time, the money from Atkins probably was grant money.
I'd have to go back and look. It was when we purchased the property. I'm pretty sure that was local sales tax dollars to do that.
I was on the impression that we're supposed to keep that totally separate.
The, the S T S funds were, the, the S T S cash has always started off as the proceeds from the Atkins sale, and it's in a separate checking account. It's still, you know, Lake Tran money, but it was when the property was sold, it went straight into that other checking account, and it's been that way since the, the thing was sold. We did do research, and it was purchased with local money way back when it was purchased, as far as we could find, record-keeping wise. And that's why we, it kept it very clean as to having not, not having any federal interest in it, which is why it got put in that checking accounting and kept some of it kind of segregated.
Ben, why did, what, what was the process of getting it set up into that account? Do you recall that?
Lisa created a new checking account with our bank and.
Well, no, but from the board perspective, wasn't there, was there a resolution at all passed?
When it was.
I know there was discussion, but I don't remember the steps that we went through to segregate that money out.
I would have to look back at the records. I don't remember the exact process. I know there was, I, I remember there being discussion. I don't remember the exact, you know, what resolutions got passed when the sale took place.
Okay.
I think when it started out, when you were doing S T S also, it was, you had to build up because all that revenue that is earned does go into that separate checking account. But obviously, we're subsidizing, we're subsidizing, and we did in the beginning because you didn't know, you didn't know how much service you were going to provide. And honestly, if you look at two thousand twenty-one is a good example of what the revenue and expenses are, was basically maybe that first few months of revenue before we hit the pandemic. Or not in twenty-one and twenty, but the, the expenses are really like the fixed cost expenses that you have regardless of whether you have that service or not. So you kind of knew at some point when we started the service that you were going to have to subsidize that to make it happen. And I believe that's why the money from the Atkins Road was decided to be put into, you know, that account and could be moved at any time if you decided you no longer wanted to provide that service. So.
Yeah, to Ben's point, though, I think it was also, we had knew that it was, was clear money, a local, clearly local money, and that to put it into the S T S fund and just help support that operation, then that would relieve us of any responsibility really of trying to continually prove that that money was not, that it was totally local money.
Yes.
Any other questions for Lisa? Is there a motion to approve the December of two thousand twenty-two operating and S T S financial statements subject to audit and capital plan review? Motion made by Ms. McNamee. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stanger. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
McTomey. Nunley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets. Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. I will now turn the meeting over to Keith.
Okay. I'm here to ask that we pass resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh oh four, so we can enter into a contract with Don Parker Sales to purchase mobile column lifts at a cost not to exceed forty-nine thousand three hundred dollars. Need to change it, Ben. Our lift in Bay Five, this is pictures of the actual lift, failed a while ago. I know the board heard about it. Last year, we had a different lift that failed where those tracks, that post goes down into the ground, the track spread apart. So the axle in the front post could drop into the ground. It was out of specs. This lift, we're able to take a little more time and make a, a different decision or make sure we're making the right decision because this post, this lift failed with the side rails failing in. So we don't get the full range of motion to pick up an M C I or a new flyer, thirty-five or forty-foot bus. We could still pick up dial rides with it, and there's no safety risk. So we took a little, little longer to figure out what we really wanted. In the lifts that we bought last time, we're no longer on state contract, so we put a request for proposal out to, to get the best lift for Lake Tran. So this is a picture of a mobile column lift that we bought in the past. The board approved in two thousand twenty, us paying fifty-six thousand dollars to, to buy these mobile column lifts. These, pick them up from each wheel. It doesn't pick them up by any part of the undercarriage. It could be used on minivans. We use it on Tahos, forty-foot M C Is, our dial rides outside. Completely mobile, we could move into separate sections of the building. So we, we decided on mobile column lifts. Our group, we, a group of three evaluated them with input from our mechanic supervisors, and you could change this slide, Ben. This, this was a picture of a lift being replaced, cutting that framework out of the ground and pouring concrete. The last time they did ours, it took them over a week. They're expecting a day of concrete work, machine with a jackhammer on it for a week in our bays while we were working around it. Caused two people not to have work areas. It's one of the reasons we didn't go with this particular lift replacement. They will have to do some of this work to fill our pit now where the old lift was, but not that extent of concrete cutting and jackhammering that they did. So we go on to the next one. We did our evaluation with the input. Don Parker Sales was a little more expensive than Northeast Equipment Specialist or North Coast Equipment Specialist. They're coming from Indiana. Don Parker Sales is selling a rotary lift where we have a service place in Manner that does our service work. They had a complete proposal. They told us if the board approves it, the lifts they demoed for us, they could probably deliver next week. So there's no lead time on waiting on these parts, or it shouldn't be unless they sold them before then. So. Unless there's any other questions, my recommendation is to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh oh four authorizing Ben or his designee to enter into a contract with Don Parker Sales to purchase mobile column lifts. Am I taking your gig? You got it. I see you staring at me. I'm, my recommendation is to, to go with Don Parker Sales to buy a lift. I'll let Brian take it from there.
Thanks, Keith.
My pleasure.
Were there any questions or comments for Keith on this? Yes, Donna?
Excuse me. Thank you. This is the first mobile lift, Keith?
We bought, we bought mobile column lifts, I think it was June of last year, we bought a set. The board approved it for fifty-six thousand dollars. They went down. So this is our second set. We did that with the anticipation of construction. And if we get, now that we're selling outside services, if we get something strange in here, a school bus, a plow truck or something like that, that we could actually grab it safer and easier. So this will be our second set.
This is to point to understand better, educate me and perhaps others. The other lifts are planted into the floor in concrete.
Correct.
Is this a safe lifting something the size of a bus, but that does not topple or anything?
Absolutely. We've had, have heard of no issues from anyone. Like that, the picture of our other columns was the last purchase. We were outside lifting one of our M C Is up there. It looks a little strange. They're completely sturdy. We could take them off those lifts and put them on jackstands too.
Thank you.
They, they won't, they won't operate out of too, on too much of a grade. If the grade was off because they're communicating with each other, if you're on a hill, they, they won't lift.
So there is some safety features.
Oh, there's quite a few safeties.
Can I ask about the grading?
Yes.
I'm trying to understand the max points to what was given.
The, the, the max points was an error on my, my part. I had to write them down. I saw it just before his meeting.
Okay.
So inspection of the lift was fifty, service center was twenty, and the other three were ten points apiece. I noticed it just before here. I couldn't get in touch with Ben fast enough to have it changed.
Where is the location of the nearest repair center then for what we're choosing?
For Don Parker Sales. The owner lives in Fairport. Their repair center is in Manner.
Okay. Okay, that's all right.
They're a, they're a heavy-duty rotary, heavy-duty service place, but they weren't heavy-duty sales. Don Parker out of Pittsburgh is the heavy-duty sales for rotary lift.
Any other questions for Keith? Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh oh four authorizing the C E O or his designee to enter into a contract with Don Parker Sales Incorporated to purchase a mobile column vehicle lift system at a cost not to exceed forty-nine thousand three hundred dollars?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pismo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stanger. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
McTomey.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I will now turn the meeting over to our C E O to discuss Geogga County Transit.
Thank you, Brian. Tonight, you have before you a request to approve the contract with Geogga Transit. As far as the schedule goes, we are keeping in line with the schedules the consultants originally promoted, suggested. So we're scheduled to have our approval tonight. Geogga County Commissioners are scheduled to approve this agreement tomorrow morning at nine thirty. My original intention was to have them approve it first, but time didn't quite get us there. But the commissioners have seen the agreement. They've submitted their questions. So I think their vote on it is a little more of a formality than a debate. So just kind of some reminders, we've worked with Geogga County Transit for a long time with scheduling. just kind of some reminders, uh, we've worked with Georgia County Transit for a long time uh, with uh, scheduling. Um, they do bring their vehicles to us for maintenance. Um. In early twenty twenty two, they approached us about expanding the partnership. Uh, us and Georgia County Transit approached ODOT to do a study. Um, ODOT independently conducted the study to give us a sense for it, came and presented uh, to the board. Um, both Lake Tran staff and G C T staff think that uh, R L S's associates uh, findings are correct. And um, basically, you know, think that it's a positive relationship for both people, for both agencies. Um. We had Brandon take the lead on the drafting of the agreement. Um, we felt it was more important for us to be in the driver's seat there than Georgia. Um, he works uh, a lot with the Georgia County Prosecutor's Office, uh, with myself, with Barbara Rhodes from Ohio Transit Risk Pool. And um, the contract uh, copies you have seen are the sort of the final result of that. Um, I don't, I would, I'm gonna let Brandon if he has any, uh, there was a, you know, the Georgia County Prosecutor's Office can be sometimes difficult to deal with, and I'll, I'll leave it at that, but Brandon did a great job um, navigating that. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that, uh.
Sure. Thanks, Ben. Um, yeah, well, they they work different schedules, no offense to anybody, uh, present company, uh, Ms. Stanger as well. Um, so there's some times, of course, in the evening, weekend, I was trying to get some answers, but I didn't expect Ms. LaChapelle to be working. We have a couple of changes. What you'll note in in the uh, language there is you're approving this in substantially similar form, something we commonly do, subject to minor revisions that are not material in nature and otherwise. We do have to add in section ten. Uh, and I'm I'm waiting to hear back from Ms. LaChapelle. That that will include uh, not only you as trustees, but the commissioners from Georgia County, or approval on that. Uh, otherwise, most of it is pretty self-explanatory. What you'll note in section fifteen, I believe, talks about supplemental agreements. There will be a variety of supplemental agreements that will go to how this is enacted. Um, I know from speaking with Ben that there's um, the reason that Georgia and Lake Tran was um, wanting to get this done sooner or later is to get the grants and get everything provided, which I think have to be uh, within a couple of days. So I'm happy to answer any questions you'll, you'll, again, you'll note there's a couple uh, minor revisions that will not change any of the material aspects of the agreement, but happy to discuss.
And we we spent a lot of time going back and forth, making sure it was appropriate, and we really captured all the things that were of critical importance. And, you know, I think uh, we ended up in a good spot with a contract that will work well for both of us uh, for quite some time. But uh, it is, you know, big topic, so happy to answer any questions anyone has. Um. Yeah.
Well, we just got that ten-page document today. Don't we get some time to look at it? I mean, I'd like to table this whole thing until we've had a chance to look at the whole thing rather than just uh, jump into it. I don't, I don't know that I want to get any of uh, Lake County's money involved with the Georgia County anyway. I I don't know how many anybody else feels about it, but uh, I don't see the benefit of it, even that you can uh, get some numbers that project that looks like there'd be a benefit. But I don't know. I wouldn't vote for it right now. Can I make a motion to table it?
You just did. Um, yes, at this time you've made a motion to table this. Um, is there a second? I do not see a second to that motion.
If this is approved tonight, what what exactly are the next steps and what exactly, you know, is are we giving him the authority to do? Maybe we can get a little more detail on that.
I will defer that to either Mr. Dines or Mr. Kapow.
Yeah, so what would happen, um, assuming the board approves it tonight, is we would move into the sort of the full planning for the transition. Um. The timeline that was estimated by us and the consultants was we would use the time from March to June to get everything ready. You know, there's a lot of details about payroll and all that stuff that has to kind of get finalized and how that all moves forward. And then we would assume actual operation on July first. Um, the the timeline is really strongly predicated on, um, there's sort of a a a limited time when you can transition operations because of the grant uh, season with ODOT. So the whole thing is kind of contingent on that July first start date. So uh, the idea was it gives us three months to prepare, make sure we have everything exactly how we want it. Um, and then there are some other action items. You can see there's other uh, votes the board will have to make to make this a reality as far as voting on the the budget and the organization chart and some asset transfers. So um, the intent is to do those things along the way in the period between March and June, and we would start to march towards that uh, July first implementation date of us actually uh, running service.
What happens if we miss grant season?
Um, if you miss grant season, you usually have to wait a year. So we would have to wait again until July.
Yeah. How how would that impact the budget there?
Uh, we we couldn't operate Georgia Transit without the the grant being in place. Um, if if we were to attempt to operate Georgia, really, it's just not, it's it's honestly not even possible. The, because the.
If we were to miss it, then then what is the the next action?
Uh, if we were to miss it, we would have to kind of regroup and decide if we wanted to do it in twenty four.
Thank you.
Um. Ben, so just um, catch us back up. So so um, ODOT is is going to provide grant funding to cover the transition costs. Is that correct?
Yes.
And no Lake County money is going to be going to Georgia Transit?
It is correct.
Okay.
It will be, it will be siloed in a separate bank account. There won't be a situation where the money's even touched, other than when Georgia pays us for services. You you could argue that some Georgia money will come to Lake Tran for services, but no Lake County money will go to Georgia in any way, shape, or form.
And both organizations will have um, increased grant uh, procuring power because we'll, we'll have a larger organization because of the 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 um, merger, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And if we are to pass this tonight, and we obviously have other votes coming up, uh, i- as we hit some other milestones with regards to the budgets and organizational chart. Um, if there was something we you know, weren't comfortable with, we'd be able to, you know, pull back from that. Um.
In theory, yes. Yeah, you know, the, there will be a critical time point, which uh, is when the grant is applied for, which I forget the exact date of. Um, there is a little bit of time, but not much. Um, and even then, I'm confident that if we had to work something out and keep Georgia the the current grantee without making a change, we could, we could probably get ODOT to keep that. But I haven't actually asked that specific question.
That's a fair question. Um, and that's got me thinking. So what is the point of no return?
Well, we've got a termination provision in there, which we can terminate for any reason. Um, and and I think it's also important to note that if the board said, look, we want to uh, to change something, uh, we would take that to them and modify or amend the agreement. We've got the ability to do that to the extent that it became necessary. Um. And I I think to to Ben's point, to be quite frank, I mean, um, you know, Georgia needs this. I I don't, you know, we would never foretell what anybody would do and don't have a crystal ball, but um, it seems as though they they have been pretty agreeable to most things. I think if there was something the board said, look, we want to institute this, uh, the hope is that they would be accommodating and agreeable to that change.
Am I correct? There's a six-month termination. Like, we 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 have six months to turn. So if we terminate, we have to give a six-month notice effectively to terminate. So we can't terminate instantaneously. We'd have to give a six-month notice, I believe.
I would assume that that's, once you have a a complete operational agreement in place. Um, maybe I'm wrong in that, but if we decided to Bill's point, if if we got to to phase two, step three, and Lake Tran Board of Trustees vote on asset transfers, we decide no, then we don't have an operational agreement going forward. Um, I don't think we have to give a hundred and eighty days at that point, because there's no, there's no agreement.
Um. I don't know what our obligations are under the agreement for asset tran, we might have, we might, that might be in the agreement. Is it?
I was looking into your initial question and missed most of what Mr. Swanson said. I'm sorry. What was the?
Well, my point, but should have been really uh, uh, made as a question. If we get down to the list, the bottom of this list, and the last vote, we say, no, you know what, we're not going to vote for that. Um, do we really have to give a hundred and eighty-day termination if we don't really have a full agreement with all of the attachments in place?
Yeah, e- effectively, y- you would do that, and then Georgia, if we were involved in litigation, would move for specific performance for us to perform under the agreement. Um, if we can't fulfill the agreement, can't perform, the argument is that we can't specifically perform because we don't have X, Y, and Z. So the effectiveness or uh, effectively the termination would be in and of itself a termination. And and you wouldn't have that hundred and eighty days almost as arguable that it's not relevant, not provided, even though the agreement provides for it.
When do the one hundred and eighty days become relevant?
Well, it it would become relevant in the event that, you know, Ben or anybody or Georgia said, listen, we're not, we're not willing to do this anymore. We don't like the operation. We don't want to continue in this stead. Would say, okay, we're going to terminate the agreement and give a hundred and eighty days' notice.
After we went through the first three phases?
Well, I I mean, you could do it at any time, right? I mean, it's subject to the the pleasure of the board or the agency. If you want to terminate, you could do it at any time pursuant to the master agreement. And again, this is subject to revision, right? So th- these are all things that if if the board says we're not comfortable with that, and you want that revised, I will certainly take it to Georgia for their consideration.
For me, this um, uh, we've had a number of conversations about this over the the last nine months or so that we, this has been coming up as a question, and I think it's always been a conceptual idea that uh, we've given Ben that we wanted to go forward with something like this, but we understood it that through that discussion and all, that there was going to be multiple steps and times that we had to go through to um, keep keep it moving and 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 keeping it going forward. And certainly, there was any time that we could have said no uh, to anything. So to me, this is again, this is one more step in the whole process of saying that we agreed with the con- concept of uh, managing and administering the uh, transit system in in Georgia County. So for for me, I think it's it's a matter, I I don't like the idea that we can re-modif- or modify this agreement in the future, but I understand how things can happen and come up that way. Uh, and certainly, we would have the opportunity to to vote on those or say we agree or disagree with those changes in the future.
Yeah, I that's um, you know, kind of a typical contractual provision. Each party can modify or amend, subject to, you know, written and writing and approved by all.
Okay. So I I guess it comes down to me is if, or this would be a a tipping point of saying, do we agree with the concept or don't we agree with the concept? So. Keep my last thing.
Any other comments, questions, or thoughts? Seeing none? Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash zero zero five authorizing the C E O or his designee to enter into and execute a contract with Georgia County Commissioners and Georgia County Transit for the operation of Georgia County Transit?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pismo, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. McNamee. Um, Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
McNamee.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Absolutely no.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I will turn the meeting back over to Ben for the six-month look ahead, and we'll also combine that with the C E O report.
Thank you very much. Um. In March, you will have a state grant authority routine item to approve state grants. Um, we expect to have the uniform contract. Um, we had to move that back because of some sample uh, issues, but we should have that on track for March. Um, we'll have a presentation of, from Pratt Co. Um, for those of, for those of you that were here two years ago, we do an employee engagement survey every two years to kind of gauge, hey, what are we doing well with the employees? What can we do better, et cetera? So um, we will have them here to present the findings of that uh, for this year. Um, in April, we have the Public Transit Agency Safety Plan, another routine item that approves our safety plan for F T A. Um, we'll have an approval request for the A W T uh, passenger shelter construction. Uh, C T Consultants is finalizing their design documents um, with approval from A W T slash Freedon. We also have a presentation, um, Tech Inc., which is the mechanical engineering firm that did a lot of the work on the uh, electric bus uh, infrastructure, was provided an award, and they would like to come uh, to Lake Tran to present that. Um. In May, we will have a passenger uh, shelter construction for Lake Erie College. Um, in June, we have federal grant authority, again, another routine item. Um, again, just a reminder, this year July is recess. Uh, August, we have our bus advertising bid, so this is again, another kind of standard thing that comes up every couple of years. Um, with the the timing of it is good this time, though, because it will allow us to include uh, Georgia in the contract. Uh, we also have snow plowing. Every three to five years, we go out to bid for snow plowing for all the sites we maintain, so sort of uh, you know, weather-related. Um, and then in September, we have a presentation of the audit by James G. Zepka. So not a ton of really high-power stuff, but does anybody have any questions about any of those things or want more information on any of them? Sure.
Will the snow plowing also include the Georgia County, or will they be responsible for their own?
Um, it will be probably included in that bid, um, just so we can get better pricing on it. It'll be funded by them, but it'll be part of the the list. Unless they have an existing contract, which to my knowledge, they do not. Good question. Any other questions about anything on the list? All right, I will go into C E O report. I will try to go quickly. Um. We uh, C T Consultants worked with Brandon and Ozan to finalize the contract. It was signed on February fourteenth, which is a very quick uh, turnaround on signature for a building can uh, project, which is excellent. Um, Ozan was strongly motivated because they had steel prices that were set to expire at the end of the day on the fourteenth, so they moved very quickly to get their steel prices locked in, which is good for them and for us. Um. Normally, it takes thirty to ninety days for us to finish that, so to get it done that quickly, you know, that's less than thirty days. That's really sort of uh, remarkable. Um. It was good because they basically agreed to the sample contract Brandon had put in the documents. There wasn't a lot of back and forth. Um, we have begun uh, work internally to prepare for construction. Uh, one of the biggest challenges, which we will hopefully spare the board from, is is parking. Um. So we're implementing some new parking rules to kind of keep that under track. Um, we have been shipping documents offsite, and I held an open house with the employees last week on Wednesday, where I showed them the plans, walked them through what was happening, and really tried to engage them and explain to them what was happening. And um, the turnout was really quite amazing. We probably had about seventy-five people come through and talk to me during the three hour or four hours I was in the boardroom. And um, one of the things that I came away with, and I even mentioned it to one of our staff afterwards, was how positive the employees were to the project. You know, a lot of times I expect criticism in some way or or kind of a complaint, and I honestly didn't even hear one. They were all very excited, very appreciative, so it's a nice kind of warm and fuzzy. Um, we just talked about this, so I will uh, kind of move past it. Um. One thing I wanted to do, and it was in your packet and in the um, in my written report, is uh, update the five-year financial forecast. So uh, Mr. Massey, Mr. Brian Massey, I think many of you know, um, as a community activist, came uh, to the board meeting in December to express his concern about our uh, projected cash balance. Um, the number he had was was accurate, uh, so much as uh, it did match what we presented in the budget. Um, in the past, we have had board members that prefer us to not do a full capital projection in the budget because it it can change over time. And so we, we've always kind of scaled back what we have in there unless it's been one hundred percent locked in with grant funding. And so um, that fifty-seven million was accurate, but it really didn't include a full capital projection. So you know, it wasn't that we gave him anything misleading, it was that there was stuff that that is not typically part of the budget process. So um, because he came in and said that, I thought it was important that the board a- and him uh, were able to see what a a cash balance would look like with a full capital projection. So we completed a full capital projection. That is what the document in your packet includes. Um, I did reach out to him um, and explain it to him and say, hey, Brian, you know, this information was just not exactly, I think, what you were intending to use it for, so this is really a more accurate uh, uh, description of those dollars. It's on his website, so you can watch it if you want to watch me talk to him. Um. One of the things that I think is really important when we think about our cash balance is that twenty-two million of that is from the various COVID grants. So that's money we didn't plan on. We didn't project when we did levies. That's money that showed up after the fact. It was kind of like the federal government said, here's your money, take it, do what you want with it. Um, it came to us by formula. It wasn't really a do we need it conversation. It was here, take this money. Um. I think a lot of the reason that I wanted to bring this up is because I think we we need to, when we talk about a strategic plan, really talk about uh, you know, what we want our cash to look like a- and where we want to maintain a healthy balance. You know, the board has a policy about how much cash we need to have on hand for operations. And so um, I think it's just an important thing to talk about because we are starting to stabilize after that uh, um, pandemic time. And really, you know, what is the amount to have the the appropriate amount? I'm I'm not sure thirty- pandemic time. And really, you know, what is the amount to have the, the appropriate amount? I'm, I'm not sure thirty-seven point five is the appropriate amount. I think that probably should be a little lower. The extent of how low that is, is a conversation the board needs to, to have a conversation about. And so I thought it just was important to see what that number really looks like with all those projections. Obviously those can change. IT strategic plan, we've been working with the consultants on existing conditions. They are wrapping that up. They have an employee survey, which is going out the end of this week to finish off the phase of the project for existing conditions. So we are in good shape for that. We did ask the faith group to accelerate, accelerate their recommendations, specifically as it relates to firewalls and, and site connectivity with the Georgia Transit Agreement. Moving forward now, we definitely are going to need to make sure we have the, the connections between our various sites in, in good condition. So we have some firewalls that are struggling to kind of keep up with what we do. And so we've asked for some, you know, guidance from them to say, hey, what, what were your recommendations going to be in this area? Can you speed them up specifically so that we can have those ready for the Georgia Transit Conversation? Already mentioned the employee engagement survey. This is the grant tracker to date. We haven't quite hit grant season, so there's still just the one grant in there where we worked with the Commissioner's Office for training. Any questions so far? Last thing, or almost the last thing, I want to talk about service quality a little bit. We're still monitoring this. Things are happening sort of like we expected. Ridership began its climb as it always does in the first quarter of the year. This winter has been mild, so ridership has climbed a little faster and, and more than we expected. But it's still on, on par with, with what our expectations were. We are tentatively planning to do the service expansion. We talked about la- last year in May. We, I really want to get March under our belt to make sure we feel comfortable about how March shakes out before we consider really expanding service. But things are improving or continue to improve. This is the denials chart. So we did see a little spike in January, but as driver classes have kind of finished their training, we've seen that consistently come down. So we are getting back hopefully to a stable point of denials where they are at sort of the levels we expect them to be, which, you know, right around that two hundred range is, is sort of the standard place. So we're continuing to monitor it. Really March will be the test. So we're going to keep watching it. If anything crazy happens, we'll let the board know. One other thing I wanted to just share was, I think all of us had heard about the apartment fire that happened in Willoughby, a pretty substantial building burnt down during the construction process. We got a call when that happened from the fire department that said, hey, we need a bus over here ASAP to shelter the people that got kicked out of their homes during the fire. So sort of an unusual thing we do as a first responder, but we sent a commuter express bus over there that sat for a period of time to sort of shelter those people that were in their homes, that were adjacent to the building and got sort of evacuated. You see Biagio has brought them some donuts and, you know, tried to make them as comfortable as they could. So it's kind of unusual where we get involved in stuff like that. So I just thought it was important to share for the board to see some of the kind of atypical things we could ask to do as a first responder sometimes. So that is my report unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Ben? Seeing none. Next item is the special projects committee. Is there any updated this time?
There is no report. Thank you.
Sure thing. So now we are going to go into old business where the first thing on the old business agenda is the board committee survey results. See, I circulated these and it seems like the first option of ad hoc committees only for the board was the majority by a long shot for either the first or the second option for board members. In the board meetings themselves, it seems like there is a desire to have more of an operations and ridership report with seventy-five percent of people responding. They would like to have that gone over in board meetings. And those were kind of my highlights. And if anyone has any discussion or comments, I'd be glad to entertain that at this time. For right now, ad hoc committees only is that was what it looks like. Eighty-seven point five percent of people either had it as their first or their second option with of that eighty-seven point five, sixty-two point five had that as their first option. Certainly I would entertain anything being brought up again. And ad hoc is how we're doing it right now with the special projects committee. Any other comments or questions on the committee survey results? Okay. The next thing here is that we have a resolution that was drafted by our legal counsel. Is there a motion for the board to pass this resolution that would require board approval for compensation increases to each non-union person?
So moved.
Motion made by Miss Pismo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Miss Nunley. And at this time, I'd like to open that up for discussion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution to add the word salaried in front of non-union person.
Sure. Is there a second to Miss Pismo's motion to add salaried in front, her amendment slash motion to add salaried in front of non-union?
Second.
Seconded by Miss Nunley as well. Any more discussion? Okay. And please remember this is a change to the rules and regulations, so it will require a two-thirds majority vote of the board.
I think we're voting on the amendment first.
We're going to vote on the amendment. Thank you very much. But Trudy, could you please call the roll for the amendment to the resolution?
Epic?
Yes.
McNamee?
Yes.
Nunley?
Yes.
Pismo?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
No.
Okay. At this time now, just going back, is there any discussion on the resolution with that amendment made? Seeing no discussion. Again, we are amending the rules and regulations, so it does require a two-third vote. Trudy, could you please call the roll?
Epic?
Yes.
McNamee?
Yes.
Nunley?
Yes.
Pismo?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
No.
Okay, thank you. The resolution has passed. Is there any, oh, I have one more piece of old business that's not on the agenda. One of the items we've been talking about for a very lengthy amount of time is a strategic plan for the organization. And at this time, I've asked Ben to, in his team, to start drafting a procurement for a strategic plan. And I will circulate that after I get something back from Ben on that. And of course, we would have the board input for this and also have the board interview. You know, an optional meeting where if you want to interview maybe the top two firms that respond, that we would entertain something like that. And at this time, I will now ask if there's any additional old business.
I think everybody got the circulation of the email from Brandon that about the changes or the the income tax, excuse me, the sales tax percentage. I'd like to have Brandon make sure that that's correct. Not that I distrust Brandon, but it is an old twenty-year-old, I think it is something like that law. Can we have the Attorney General of Ohio review that and make sure it's correct?
Mr. Dines, I'll turn it over for you for comment on that.
Sure. If I, if I understand, it would be the board's decision. If, if you wanted me to look into it further, what we have is a nineteen eighty-nine Ohio Attorney General opinion. It's obviously pretty old. The statute is somewhat clear. But because there's an opinion out there and because it, to a degree, you could argue it's, it's conflicting a little bit with percentages and things. And I think we've all done that. And I, by all admission, I am not a mathematician or am I a tax professional? But I, I would just think it's appropriate if the board so desires that I would seek an opinion from the Ohio Attorney General, just to make, provide, provide the board a clarification.
What, what would you be seeking an opinion? Just trying to clarify.
Yeah, I, I think the statute is somewhat clear as it talks about the reduction. My understanding from some of the board members is there's questions as to what that reduction is by virtue of a percentage and a fraction or even down to zero. And because there is that old nineteen eighty-nine opinion out there from the Ohio Attorney General, I just would feel more comfortable before giving all of you any opinion on that and providing you something that is clear that I just would reach out to them for that. That's all.
Brandon, for you to get this opinion reviewed or a new, a new opinion, what kind of work does that entail?
From me?
From you?
Yeah, I would just, I would reach out to the Ohio Attorney General and ask them to update their opinion and or clarify it in light of what the statute provides. That's a, yeah, just simple correspondence. Correct. Presumably, as some folks probably know, oftentimes when you do that, the Attorney General then will engage in some dialogue with you. So there would be some back and forth to just simply understand what it is we are asking and what it is they're providing. I would, I would think that with this, it probably would not be terribly lengthy or, or something. It would take a lot of time. I just think it's appropriate.
I'm just wondering, we've got a strategic plan coming. And I'm wondering if it's really the appropriate point in time to do this, or if we should not take this deep dive into the organization to understand what our needs are, what we're going to try to do and what the financial picture looks like as it stands now with that levy before we would worry about going forward and asking for another opinion from the Attorney General.
Brandon, what's the timeline? I'm getting an opinion on another done. I've read them a lot, another.
It's a great question. Hopefully not too long. In my past experience, it's probably ranged from thirty days to six months. I guess it just depends on the way G's office.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yeah, it's up to you. I would prefer if, if the board wanted to take a next step and just have me do that. And again, you're not voting on any action. You're just simply directing legal counsel to do that. I think in light of how everybody feels, maybe a, a motion and an affirmative vote might be appropriate.
I, I'll make a motion to request that our legal counsel seek an Attorney General opinion on what is it? What's the statute five seven three nine point zero two three?
Motion made by Miss? Motion made by Miss Pismo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sheets. Any more discussion?
There's a, does the, getting the opinion of a G does in any way, then it can, it kind of decision. It's just extra information.
Correct.
Any additional discussion? Trudy, can you please call the roll?
Epic?
Yes.
McNamee?
No.
Nunley?
Yes.
Pismo?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
No.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Is there any additional old business?
Brian, the last meeting you indicated about the bylaws being either strategic planned or committee, and you made any more thoughts on that?
No, I did the communications survey. And your request is regarding the bylaws on how we are going to move forward with updating the rules and regulations and bylaws.
That would be correct.
I'd be happy to have a discussion now if you have thoughts or if anyone else has thoughts.
I guess from my perspective, after what we did this evening or two, that we requested maybe Mr. Dines draft up a resolution approving all the other changes to the bylaws or the rules and regulations that had been proposed. You received them a couple of months ago. I had not received any comments back on them, so I assume everybody's okay with those. So for making changes to the bylaws, in one way, we should maybe include them all.
Okay, so you're, are you making a motion then?
I am.
So you're making a motion to approve the changes to the bylaws that were circulated a couple of months ago that you wrote via email.
Right.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Thanks.
It does not appear there is a second at this time.
For what it's worth, Chuck, I, I did have some comments, but I didn't know what the vehicle was to share them. So you weren't here at the last meeting when we talked about doing the, like workshop or something else along those lines. I'd be glad to share those with you. I just know that that's where we were. Okay.
I hear Gary's comment that I didn't know where the vehicle was to review these. And I was hoping that there would be some sort of meeting where we could actually discuss this.
So do we want to maybe, and I'll entertain anyone's thoughts or comments. Today is February twenty-seventh. Do we want to put a deadline, maybe say today's the twenty-seventh, say March fifteenth to have any comments to Mr. Dines about the bylaws that Mr. Zibble has reviewed and then Mr. Dines could make them? Or is that a terrible idea? I'm open to any suggestions. I'm just trying to help advance this.
So can I see, I'm not sure if I understand what you're saying. Can I repeat that? What I think you said, and you tell me if that's right or not?
Just if anyone has any updates, changes to, that they would like to see in the bylaws, maybe have them to Mr. Dines by a date flexible to be determined. And then Mr. Dines can take it upon himself to draft them.
So he's going to draft, he's gonna take whatever we say or whatever. And he's gonna like, clean it up, make it sound pretty and lawyerish and
And then I would expect there to be
Right.
discussion.
Right. Okay. I'm just making sure I'm visioning what you're saying correctly.
Unless there's a better way to do this, Mr. Dines, that I'm lately missing.
It's up to all of you. But at the last meeting, I think one of my suggestions was a workshop or something. But however the board pleases, I'm happy to take action, whatever.
I like the idea of the workshop.
I may be, not having been at the meeting, maybe repeating or going down a rabbit hole. We don't want to go down. But from my perspective, if we're going to be talking about changing the rules and regulations, I'd like to see all the suggestions. Because I think it gives us a better flavor of thinking, rather than just get all of us throwing them into an anonymous pile and get back a, a single set. I, I think I'd like to, if there's a way to do this, I'd like to see the suggestions we all have. I think what Brian's suggesting is that they all, you get those to Brandon for him to take a look at and compile. I'm happy to do that. I, I think to everybody's point. And I'd be happy, I'd be happy to accept everybody's comments too and, and work them and make a presentation to you guys, but no, maybe I didn't make my point clear. I'd, I'd like us all to see all of the suggestions. At this point, there's only one set of suggestions and that's the ones I have produced, plus a little bit of input from Mr. Dines. Okay. But before we have Mr. Dines go ahead and write up what he thinks is the response, I think all of us should see what the responses from all of us are. There's, in my mind, there's an intermediate step here. Yeah. And that's what I think, I think we were saying is that everybody should give their comments to Brandon. If you want, or I can, I'm willing to take them myself and then compile them and show, exhibit them to everybody. I was not understanding what you were saying. I apologize.
Okay. I'll defer to Mr. Dines, but my concern is that we're getting into pub, open meetings issues with that, that, that we probably should have a workshop where we all just come together and talk about them. Because if we're throwing things around with what, what are all our opinions are, then we're, we're getting into open meetings problems.
So sometime in March, we will set a work session to discuss the rules and regs and bylaws. It seems like, because I'm seeing Mr. Dines nodding in approval of your comment. So it sounds like that'll be the best way to move forward.
Yes. Thank you, Laura, for getting that clarified.
Okay.
We're not thanking an attorney, are we?
I'm not going there with you.
Any additional old business? Just for the record, that was the longest old business section out of every meeting added together. Any new business?
I know I'm not a board member, but can I bring something up? I wanted to ask the board for their opinion. So I've, I've, over time, I've heard from different board members about the desire to shorten the meetings and maybe focus the thought process a little. So one of the things I wanted to ask everyone how they feel is that
One of the things I wanted to ask everyone how they feel is a tool we use at Otrip, uh, is a thing called a consent agenda. Which is an agenda that goes at the beginning of the meeting. Um, in Robert Schules is called a consent calendar, but it, it, you put, um. You know, several action items in it that are, uh, routine that don't essentially require board discussion and the board can vote to approve them in a group without conversation. Um, so as I thought about how to make a meeting more efficient, you know, I thought, should, could we put the minutes there? Financials, potentially things like state grant authority, that the board could take one action on, approve all of those things. And then not have discussion. Um, my intent is not to somehow limit discussion at all. It was how to move the meeting quicker. Um, the way we use that at Otrip as a tool is we, we put it. The staff lists what they think are the consent items. If the board says, hey, you know, this thing, I want to talk about it. When, when you vote on the consent agenda, you just pull it out and then you have it as a regular discussion point. You have full and complete discussion. So. I wanted to toss that out there as a potential vessel to make the meetings a little quicker, you know, for the things that. We rarely have, um, a lot of discussion on like, you know, our annual plans, our annual grants, requests, minutes and, and financials. I don't, I don't personally, you know, I'm happy to do whatever the board would like, but I was brainstorming with how to make the meeting. Maybe s- more efficient. Just wanted to ask opinions.
What if the minutes did need amended or if there was something in particular that we did have something to say about it?
Yeah, you can always, when, when, when a board member would make a motion for the consent agenda, they would say, I move to approve the consent agenda. Without this item in it, and then it would be on normal discussion for that meeting, full conversation like normal. So you would have the, the right to whatever terminology you'd like to use to remove it, um, at the meeting. It wouldn't be like locked there or anything.
So when you're saying there's a consent agenda, is that inside of the regular agenda or you effectively have two?
It would be the first part of the action section. Yeah, it's the, the first action item would be to approve the consent agenda. If the board approved it with the items in it, all those items would functionally be approved. And there would be no conversation. Should the board say, we want to review all those items, then you, you wouldn't approve them and you could still have regular discussion in that same meeting.
Yeah, I have seen this work, uh, used and, and found it to be of value.
So I think, I think it sounds great as well. Um, but. So by, by the same token, you're saying that a person, a person could make a motion and say, subject to taking out the financial plan. You know, whatever, by the same motion, if I made the motion, if I made a motion to do the consent agenda, someone could say no. To not do that, could not accept that motion because they wanted to take something else out. Is that?
Yeah, the way we use it at Otrip is the board members approach the president before the meeting and say, hey, I'd like to review this item. And then the president makes the motion. They say, you know, I'm requesting a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item X, and then it, it goes forward.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And it's the type of thing that, you know, it also would be prepared with the agenda when it's sent out the week plus, uh, days in advance. So. If the board member's like, hey, you know, I don't want this in the consent agenda. There's, there's either time to have, ask questions or to, to move it over.
Got it. Thank you. I think that sounds great.
I mean, we can try it. If you don't like it, we can always, you know, go back. It's, it's always open for sort of, uh, potential. I just, you know, was trying to brainstorm.
How much time would we have to review those?
It would come out in the packet. So you would see it, you know, ten days ahead of time, like you see your packet now.
And when would you need to feed that? What I'm asking.
Whenever you wanted to give it to me. I mean, and the items would be in the packet. So like for the finances, you would still see the full report that Lisa provides. She just wouldn't necessarily go over it in a PowerPoint format in the meeting. She would have provided you the report in advance. If you had questions about it, or if we said, hey, this month it probably shouldn't be in the consent agenda because something substantial happens. And she wants to present it, you know, like this meeting in February, when we're reviewing the end of year financials, we probably wouldn't put in a consent agenda. Cause it's the end of the year, we should take a look at it, but other times it would exist in there, um, unless someone had a question. Or whatever, you know, I, we don't have to do it. I just was, you know, thought I'd bring it up.
We can try it. Yeah, we're, we're good.
So I'll give it a go next month and then you guys can let me know, hey, we hate this or this works out or no, whatever. Okay. Thank you.
Any additional new business? Is there a motion to adjourn today's Board of Prestige meeting? Motion made by Ms. Pishmo, seconded by Ms. Mactoome. Uh, Trudy, can you please call the roll?
Epic.
Yes.
Actomy. Pismo. Yes. Stanger. Yes. Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned at six thirty-one.